6.5, 10:15 a.m., item: Presentation of the Clear Lake Integrated Preparedness and Resilience Plan for Dresneid, is that right? Muscle Management: A Rapid Response and Transition to Containment Plan, brought to us by Water Resources, and we have Angela De Palma Dow.
Thank you.
Good morning, board. Scott De Leone, I am also here on Zoom.
Didn't see you there, sorry.
And my role this morning is simply to introduce Angela, and she, Angela De Palma Dow, is our Invasive Species Program Coordinator. She was the lead on this particular project, and I will be turning it over to her and our consultants to be making the presentation today on this very important plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Angela. Thank you.
Thank you for that introduction, and thank you Chair. First, we're going to start off with a video. This is about a five-minute PSA, Public Service Announcement, that we made last year as part of a state grant deliverable, and it provides a little background of the current quagga muscle invasive muscle prevention program that we have here on Clear Lake. So Jake, we'll go ahead and run that video, and then we'll take up the rest of the presentation after. Thank you.
Welcome to Lake County, home of California's largest natural freshwater lake, Clear Lake.
Originally called Hobbiton, meaning "big water" in native Pomo, Clear Lake is one of the oldest lakes in North America.
Clear Lake has over 120 miles of shoreline with shallow and rich waters that makes it a world-class fishing destination.
The productive waters of Clear Lake have produced record-catching fish, which contributes to the average 15,000 boaters that visit Clear Lake every year.
Clear Lake is currently free of invasive quagga and zebra mussels.
Monthly monitoring by Lake County's Water Resources staff help to maintain Clear Lake's muscle-free status.
If invasive quagga or zebra mussels are introduced into Clear Lake, their devastating impacts will last forever.
Mussels consume massive amounts of green algae when they filter-feed lake water.
Which will decimate the sport fishing population, as green algae is the base of the food web in Clear Lake. Mussels can attach to and clog drinking water pipes.
Causing millions of dollars to the public and private sector to pay for needed maintenance and removal.
For the drinking water systems on the lake, this is especially concerning, as Clear Lake provides drinking water to about 66% of the county's population.
Added cost to remove mussels would make drinking water treatment more difficult and expensive.
There are no examples of successful eradication of invasive mussels from lakes, meaning if quagga or zebra mussels are introduced into Clear Lake...
They will be here forever, and the Clear Lake as we know it today will never be the same again.
There are three simple things we can do to prevent the introduction of invasive mussels.
Before leaving any water body, remember to clean your boat inside and out, and all compartments. Remove any plants, dirt, or sand.
Drain your engine, pull your drain plug, and empty any water from ballast tanks or live wells.
Dry your boat, including inside compartments, and make sure all equipment, including water toys and fishing gear, are completely dry before visiting another water body. Every boat launching in Lake County needs to be screened and stickered.
Find participating screeners and sticker sellers online at www.nomussels.com.
When visiting a sticker seller, the boater will fill out a single-page screener form. The screener will verify that the boat is safe to launch in Lake County...
And does not have mussels, or has not recently been in a muscle-infested lake.
If a boat is high-risk, or likely to have mussels, an inspection is needed, and the vendor will call a certified watercraft inspector from the county...
And they will perform an inspection on the boat for free.
Once a boat passes screening and/or inspection, boaters will purchase a sticker for $20.
The County of Lake Quagga Mussels stickers are located next to the yearly California State sticker, which will be adhered to both sides of the bow, next to the registration numbers, and the state's mussels fee sticker, as well as at the back of the trailer. Please report any violators without current quagga mussels stickers.
Even screened boats will sometimes be stopped at the ramps by ramp monitors for quality assurance.
Sometimes, muscle-sniffing dogs will also be present at the ramps to conduct impromptu inspections.
This step won't take long, but it's important so that we can continue to protect Clear Lake from invasive mussels.
If you have any other questions, or you think you see a quagga or zebra mussel in Clear Lake, or in another water body in Lake County...
You can call us at Water Resources at 707-263-2344.
You can send us an email at water/resources@lakecountyca.gov.
Or you can send us a message on Facebook. Find us @LakeCountyWater.
Thanks for helping us keep Clear Lake clear of invasive mussels.
And with your help, we can protect and preserve Clear Lake for future generations of people, plants, and animals.
Thanks to our funding partners at the California State Parks Division of Boating and Waterways for supporting this program and PSA.
Thank you, Jake, and I believe we have a presentation for a screen share. Great, thank you so much. So, the rest of the presentation today, we're going to talk about Muscle Introduction, Prevention, and Response Plan. We showed you a little bit about the current program, and now we're going to talk about some of our plans for the unfortunate event in case we do get an introduction of mussels into Clear Lake. And I really want to give props to our funders. We got this project funded by a grant from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And then today, I have Cory, my technician, he's upstairs running the presentation, and he is vital to this program, boots on the ground. And then our consultants today, Lisa De Bruckeir, and Leah Elwell, from Creative Resource Strategies and Conservation Collaborations are consultants, and they'll be presenting with me today. And a little bit outline, next slide, please. Okay, outline, we already showed a little bit about the intro to the program, I have a few more slides on that. We'll briefly describe how we developed the plan, and then the consultants will talk about the plan, and we'll have some next steps, and then we'll be available for questions and answer. And I'd also like to say that if anybody has any questions or is interested more in-depth about our prevention program, we did come to the Board in March of 2021 and gave like about a 30-minute presentation that went into detail about the program works. That's available on the Lake County YouTube channel, just look for that date. So, this is what we're preventing. Imagine during the drought years, some of the water recedes in Clear Lake, and we have a bunch of shoreline exposed with sharp shells of zebra or quagga mussels. There's, of course, lots of other impacts that zebra-quagga mussels could cause to the lake, but unless we want our lake to look like this, we really want to both prevent and plan for a response for managing an introduction. And this is a close-up of what these mussels look like. So this photo makes them look really big, but they're actually very small, and you can see that the quagga mussel on the left and the zebra mussel on the right are very similar-looking, and we usually refer to them, acronym is QZ. So if I go into, if I say QZ, I'm referring to quagga and zebra mussels. And you can see that they can colonize both sessile objects, such as this boat prop, as well as living things like other native mussels, or native clams, and organisms like this crayfish here. So, a big shout-out and thanks, of course, this program, this prevention program that we have right now, only works because we have such a rock-star team of ramp monitors. I have them all listed here by name, and here's some snapshots of them out there doing their job, and a lot of times, they're the first face that somebody sees when they come out of town, out of state, to our lake. They stop at the ramps, they want to get their boat in, and they see a ramp monitor. That ramp monitor provides them education outreach, tells them where the best places are to go eat, you know, maybe some secret fishing spots, maybe some conversation about that, but really, they're there to ask them about their boat and making sure that they're safe to launch. So, I appreciate them every day, all the time, they are the best part about the program that we have right now. So thank you to all the ramp monitors here. So as you saw from the video, there is a need for a plan to respond and to plan for in case we get an introduction of QZ mussels in Clear Lake. You know, in the video, we talked about, there's about 15,000 average boaters that come to visit our county for aquatic activities, and that's high-risk, that's high potential for an introduction. So we really need to have a plan in place in case we are to get a detection or an introduction. And this is both important for the ecological aspects of the lake, but also for the economic. So Lake County relies on more than a million annual fishing dollars, just for fishing-related, so that doesn't take into account all the other tourism around the lake or other lake activities. And that's $20,16, so that's probably been elevated since then. In general, the economic toll of invasive species and quagga muscle management is pretty large. Next slide, please. So this is just to give you overview of that. Economic costs of invasive quagga muscle management, or mitigation at the national level, has been between $120, $130 billion annually. In the Great Lakes Basin, so bringing it down to freshwater systems, about $30 million annual cost just for muscle monitoring and control. And then in California, for drinking water damages, they're looking at about $30 billion for those costs. And these are kind of outdated numbers, so I'd say between 2008, 2012, so that's even more in today's dollars. And again, the need for a response plan and the need for continued efforts for a prevention plan is really demonstrated by the boat visitors that come to Clear Lake. So what this map here is showing is the boaters that come to Clear Lake where they were last. So what water body were they visiting, or was their boat in before they came to Clear Lake? And we have the data shown here for the zip codes for those locations from 2018, 2019, 2020, 21, 22. And this is really important when you see the overlap of the current quagga mussel and zebra mussel distribution. So you guys can see where those quagga and zebra mussels are detected across the United States, and there is direct overlap from where boaters are visiting before they come to our water body. And then to bring it closer to home here in California, even in the state of California, in Southern California, there are water bodies that have quagga mussels currently. And there is, the closest reservoir is San Justo Reservoir, that's in central California, and that has zebra mussels. That's the closest located to us, but that reservoir is completely closed off. There is no traffic, boating traffic, in and out of that reservoir, it's not used, so those zebra mussels stay contained. And that was a direct impact on the local economy that depended on that reservoir for aquatic, economic aquatic industries. And then here's an example that's happening recently. In Idaho, the Snake River has recent detections of quagga mussel villagers, so those are the juveniles. They're detected in the open water, so they don't sit on anything, they're in the open water, and through regular monitoring efforts, they discovered villagers. And so there's a section of the Snake River around where that star is indicated on the map, that is under a closure, immediate closure. So the Department of Fish and Wildlife there in Idaho has prevented any fishing access, hunting, trapping, there is no way to get close to that river at all, and that section that's been closed since they found those villagers. And this is pretty scary, because villagers can be found in a little amount of water that's cool and dark, and that could be lots of spaces on boats or equipment. And we do know that a lot of boats travel from Idaho here to California into Clear Lake. Also, the Snake River Basin, if you guys see on the map, the breadth and range of that basin is pretty wide, it eventually drains into the Columbia River Basin, and it touches all the states in Utah, Wyoming, Nevada, Washington, and our neighbors in Oregon and Nevada. And they're currently doing treatments in that section of Snake River. They're not going to be able to determine if they've worked or not until spring, when those villagers are viable, that's the season for the reproduction. So close-to-home example, they're going through right now a response that we want to prevent and plan for, and that's part of the presentation purpose today. So I'm going to do a brief plan development talk before I turn it over to the consultants. And again, really want to thank Grant from Fish and Wildlife Service for developing this, and our two consultants here. So this was a very collaborative process. We had participating agencies, next slide, please, there you go, thanks. We had collaborative agencies, particularly from Fish and Wildlife, the state, and they participated in most of our meetings and our outreach events. And then we also had a wide breadth of partners that were invited and participation, there were several Lake County tribes that participated in the development of this plan, Clear Lake Water Purveyors, as well as some regional water districts, so those downstream that would receive water, work with water from Clear Lake or neighboring watersheds, so from Yolo County, Sonoma Water, Solano Water District, and then the city of Lakeport. We also recruited a lot of public input for this plan development. There was two virtual public and partner town halls, and in these town halls, we gathered information, we gathered concerns, feedback, we really wanted to make sure that we incorporated the needs of these participants into the plan development. So we had a webinar on February 2nd, and this was during the day, and this was more targeted for agencies, tribes, partners. And then we had a water quality Wednesday, and this was February 22nd, and this was in the evening, to get anybody that couldn't attend the day webinar. It was really important for us to get public inclusion, we found, not just for the development of the plan, but it also helped us put together the strategies that we needed when we wanted to communicate to the public in the event if we get an introduction. So what kind of worked, what didn't, and what that interaction was like. I will say that both of these presentations are recorded, they're on our website for this program, and the Water Quality Wednesdays are always on our YouTube channel. We also did something which was really exciting, actually kind of difficult for me as the Invasive Species Program Coordinator, but we did a real-life response exercise. So this was in June, and it was a couple days, and we literally set up scenarios for what happens if a mussel is introduced into the lake. So here's this cove, and a villager detection happened yesterday, and what do we do? Who do we notify? What's the next steps? So we worked through some of those scenarios, and it really helped troubleshoot, and then get a specific information and the questions we needed to include in our plan, and who do we talk to, and who do we need to include in these decisions. We really want to thank the participating partners of that exercise, so they're all listed here, and without their contribution and participation, it would not have been successful, and we would not have garnered the information that we needed. So really, thanks to all of those listed there. And then, all the information from that exercise, thank you to the consultants, Lisa and Leah, for putting together this after-action report, which is on our website, which chronicled everything that occurred during that exercise. So, I'm talking about a lot of links and resources and things we did, and so if you need to find information, any of you at home on the Zoom can do a screenshot of this, but here's all the links of where you can find information on this program and the efforts we've done for both prevention, the current program, and planning for introduction. We have social media page at Facebook, we have a YouTube channel, and then if you want general information about the state's effort for quagga and zebra mussels, the CDFW, or California Department of Fish and Wildlife page, is really good. You can always come and talk to me in the third floor in the courthouse, or call me. I love to talk invasives, and I can talk about this program if you have any questions. So we're going to jump in, present the plan now. I did provide hard copies of this plan to the Board and Admin on October 3rd, to give you guys lots of time to read and take notes and get any questions that you had. And then this plan has also been online since August on our www.clearlakemuscleprevention.org website. That website was put together for this plan development, for all those resources to be in one place, and there was an embedded form on that website for anybody that just had questions or comments could easily submit that information and didn't have to go through a long comment process. And if the public, if anybody's interested in reviewing this draft plan, we have a hard copy upstairs, available for rent, checkout, and if you'd like a copy for yourself, we can give that to you for a small printing fee. And with that, I'll turn it over to the consultants, and we will talk about the plan.
All right, thanks so much, Angela. I'm Lisa De Bruckeir with Creative Resource Strategies. This is Leah Elwell with Conservation Collaborations. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today, and we've enjoyed working with county staff and its numerous partners throughout the past year to put this important plan together. Leah and I have worked with the Western States and Canadian provinces for over the past decade, dealing with dresneid introductions, planning for them, doing rapid-response exercises, and making sure that entities, whether it's a county, or a state, or a region, have the tools available and the understanding of what it would take to respond to an introduction of quagga or zebra mussels. So we really appreciated the opportunity to come back here. I was actually here six or seven years ago, assisting with some watercraft reciprocity programs with Berriessa, Solano, Castake, and some of the other local water bodies. So we're pretty familiar with the area, and definitely very familiar with the lake. So next slide. And the next one. So really, the purpose of this plan is to make sure that Lake County knows what it needs to have in place, should it ever get an introduction of dresneids. And equally important, is there anything the county can do now to enhance its prevention efforts, so that it doesn't get an introduction? And so we looked at this project through both of those lenses. And the plan provides guidance to Lake County, as well as the numerous partners that would be involved in an eventual response. Next slide. Angela describes some of the potential effects from an invasive mussel invasion, and it just cannot be overstated. These mussels are ecosystem engineers, they go into a water body, they completely disrupt all of the ecosystem processes that are in place, they have devastating effects on fish populations, in particular sport fish populations, they cause incredible financial impacts to tourism when they invade a lake, and we've demonstrated anywhere from $3 to $20 million in local tourism reduction costs as a result of aquatic invasive species entering water bodies. There'll be real visual effects from these, because when you have drought, or you have lower water levels in the lake, you'll be able to see the exposed razor-sharp edges of the shells, and they're a real pain for boaters, boat dock owners, the county's going to have some issues with managing any of its infrastructure associated with the lake. But one of the biggest problems, and one of the most costly, is going to be dealing with water delivery, and what you're going to have to do to your water systems, your infrastructure systems, and that includes not only Lake County and the population that it provides water to, but all of the self-supplied water users that are going to have to purchase equipment and infrastructure to manage the water that they're pumping out of wells. So it's a wide-ranging problem, and we've included a lot of the cost estimates in those types of things in the plan itself. Next slide. We did build this website, Angela mentioned it, and we wanted to create a clear, transparent process with the public as we moved through the development of the plan. So every time we did something as part of the project, or created a new piece of the plan, we always posted it to the website, and as Angela mentioned, the plan has been up there since August, the draft plan since August of '23. Next slide. So the plan itself contains a lot of background information. We really wanted to help everybody understand what the legal and statutory authorities are of the agencies and entities that would be involved in an eventual response. As Leah and I have worked with the Western States, when we go into an area and start working with teams of people, the realization happens quickly that a lot of entities really don't understand who's on first, where do the financial resources come from, how does the response play out, all those types of things. So that's what this plan does, is really describe those. It also describes the importance of communication, and how the public gets notified, how partners get notified, how you would get notified in the process. And then a key piece of the plan is, once a response takes place, how you transition that to containment. And so, it's going to be really important, if Clear Lake gets mussels, and they are unable to eradicate them, that there is a strong containment program in place to protect the rest of California and any other water bodies in the West that do not currently have quagga or zebra mussels. And then, we think one of the biggest pieces of the plan are the recommendations that we are making, and I think it was seven thematic areas, and that's what we really want to spend the bulk of our time on, is walking through those seven sets of recommendations. So next slide. And the first one deals with funding. We have found that most entities that have had to respond to an introduction of quagga or zebra mussels, whether it be a small enclosed quarry or water body, or a high-elevation mountain lake, or in the case of Idaho, the Snake River from Twin Falls Dam down to Niagara Falls, excuse me, minimum of $1 to $1.5 million upfront, and upwards of into the millions and millions to deal with an introduction of these. And that includes the immediate response, as well as long-term containment. So it's important that Lake County think about that, and what we've provided in the plan are some potential sources of revenue that you could use to begin building that fund in preparation for it. It could involve changes to mussel sticker pricing, establishing a mussel sticker for non-motorized, non-resident watercraft. And I know that there's a little bit of angst about non-motorized vessels having a sticker price associated with them, but I want to assure you, in my experience of dealing with other states, although there's some initial resistance to that, once these watercraft owners realize what the funding is going for, that quickly dissipates, and there is strong support for the program. And I can tell you that is true, and definitely in Oregon and in several of the other Western states. And if you need for us to provide you with some of those examples after today, we're happy to do so. There could be potential for a local municipal fee, or a county ordinance that establishes special event fees. You have over 1,000 big bass tournaments that come into Clear Lake every year, and a lot of these folks are used to paying more significant fees in other locations where they have these large bass tournaments. So it would not be outrageous to consider raising that fee for these large tournaments to help support some of these decontamination and inspection efforts. Leah, next slide.
The next category of recommendations that we provided in the document was related to reporting. So it was already mentioned, the self-supplied water users. So this first recommendation is to develop an online reporting system that actually would encompass those self-supplied water users. At this time, it's not clear the number of those, but really having an understanding and creating a database that could be used to not only notify that suite of individuals, but then also just track that information. Next on that reporting would be to really develop and implement a reporting or a monitoring program, so allowing those folks that are continually using water from the lake, they could be eyes on what could be occurring, so kind of that first set of early detection, they may be able to see mussels in their system at an early stage. So that would be one of the key places to, in some ways, a reporting, or, sorry, a partnering opportunity. And then finally, increase and diversify the current programmatic monitoring efforts that are ongoing right now, to really just maximize abilities to be on that front line of detection. So, next slide.
The next one is capital expenditure recommendations. One thing that's going to be really critical is the establishment of up to four permanent watercraft inspection and decontamination stations in the county and around the perimeter of Clear Lake. That will benefit not only Clear Lake, it will benefit some of the other local water bodies that are around Clear Lake. It's really important to do this as soon as possible, because if you have those in place before you get an introduction, you will lessen the chance of getting an introduction, because you'll have more clean boats that actually launch in the lake. They'll come through choke points around Clear Lake, where as they drive by, they'll be able to pull in, and there's some incredibly new technology and engineered designs now that significantly lessen the time that it takes for somebody to have their boat inspected and decontaminated, they're called dip tanks, and literally, the driver of the boat just moves his boat back into a dip tank while it's on the trailer, the water cleans the system out, and then he just drives off, and that's all there is to it. So those cost about $800,000 apiece, and so we've provided Angela and her staff with the costs for all of these different systems, and we've been working with them on potential locations as well. Additional signage is going to be important, and hopefully Caltrans will be a good partner in this effort, in terms of signage off of I-5 and as they enter into some of the county roads as well. And then making sure that you have all the necessary infrastructure, because when you site one of these watercraft inspection stations, you need to have water, safe lighting, easy ingress and egress, that sort of thing. So we've provided those numbers and estimates to the county. Next slide. Next slide.
Next set of recommendations are on fishing regulations. So, this first one looks at some interesting work that shows that the reddared sunfish actually like eating and would select mussels. So, if they were here, they could be sort of one way of keeping numbers down. So, consider revising a fishing regulation. So, this would obviously involve California Department of Fish and Wildlife, but to allow a minimum, decrease the daily take of the reddared sunfish to kind of enhance that food opportunity for them. So, next would be a consideration for habitat enhancements. As I understand, you guys are currently working on shoreline regulations, but that are ordinances, but really enhancing the habitat for more vegetation that would then, you know, positively affect the fisheries would be a strong move.
Next slide. So, the second-to-last big bucket is all about collaboration, and we can't overstate that as well. We did our best to bring in as many partners with county staff as we went through this process because there's a lot of entities not right here around the lake that are going to be affected. Yolo, that gets water from Clear Lake, they're going to be affected. And so, we did our best to bring a lot of those entities to the table. But considering periodic preparedness exercises with those entities is important, working with those regional water body managers to look at compiling resources together. You've got some big, heavy federal agencies with big budgets that manage water bodies near Clear Lake. They could be potential partners in the watercraft inspection and decontamination facilities as well as any other reciprocity programs you might have. And then, just working with collaborators to better understand the connection between the values that local citizens place on water use and protecting the lake from invasive species. So, there's a lot of collaborative work to be done there, and I think there's a second slide for that. Corey?
So, to add to this, particularly when we look at a response, is really understanding what inventory is available to do an adequate response, much like any kind of emergency you can think of. If you don't have the right tools, it really hinders capability to do that. So, doing an upfront inventory of what's out there, are there more decontamination units available, how quickly can we get them, those kinds of inventories would be really helpful. Something as simple as making sure it's very clear, who are those contact information for on-hours of operation and after-hours because we know people come and go, but making sure that stuff is updated so it's available in a moment's notice. Also important this is looking at the regional water body managers and making sure that information is up to date as well. So, some of these are really straightforward and simple, but you can see just staying on top of them is critical. And then, finally, there were discussions in the rapid response exercise about moving forward with media control response, but really digging deep and getting input from stakeholders of what that would look like. So, there was complete understanding of what may or may not happen should a chemical response take place.
Next slide. And then, the last piece is, we did have the National Sea Grant Law Center, who we've been working with for a number of years on these types of issues. Look at your ordinances, look at the county ordinances. They actually did that six or seven years ago as well when we looked at reciprocity among the water bodies. And so, they made some suggestions just for you to consider, requiring sticker purchases by non-motorized boat owners, making it mandatory to decontaminate motorized, non-motorized watercraft and sea planes upon exiting an infested water body. That is going to be critical before you ever have an introduction. Another change is ensuring that property owners with access to the lake post any signage that you guys might develop, talking about quagga zebra program requirements, and clearly stating in the ordinance that the primary county authority, the county has the authority and responsibility for enforcing the watercraft inspection stations. That's an important one to get in place as soon as possible as well. And then, just some other things, like there are property owners that have short-term or vacation rentals, encouraging them to include verbiage about AIS as somebody enters their property and looks at anything that they might have in their house rules. So, the take-home messages that we'd like to share with you before we leave is that Lake County is going to lose all of its state prevention funding upon confirmation of dracynids. This is perplexing to us. In all of the states that we've worked in, there is an understanding that if one water body gets a dracynid introduction, that the most important thing it can do is to continue funding that water body to contain those dracynids to the water body. If you don't do that, they just spread, and that's how they've spread literally across the United States. So, we've been working hard with the county to figure out, when the state pulls the plug on funding, how is the county going to be able to respond? Because that million dollars, Angela's got the details on that, it will be in jeopardy. And it's literally once they're detected too. It's not like there's a 12-month gap. This could also jeopardize the sticker program as well because then you have all the issues that happen with, you may have to shut down the lake for a time and all that sort of thing. We're recommending that collaboration be enhanced now with Yolo Water Districts to plan for an introduction and establishment of dracynids. Lake County will play a lead role upon a quagga zebra mussel introduction. The state will be there in some capacity to assist. This is different than all of the other states that we've worked in. In all of the other states we've worked in, the state Fish and Wildlife Agency or Natural Resource Agency takes the lead. In Idaho right now, when they got dracynids in the Snake River, Idaho Department of Agriculture was the lead and is the lead, and they actually implemented a response in less than two weeks. So, that's an important thing to think about and maybe strengthening and better understanding that partnership with CDFW and why it's so different here. And then, just ensuring you do the best you can to leverage resources and partnerships with all of these neighboring water bodies. We got a lot of great cooperation years ago when we met with Berryessa and Castaic and those other water body managers, and it's just important to try and line up some of those resources now for an eventual introduction.
Thank you, Lisa and Leah. Can you go back one slide, Corey? There's a little dollar sign here on the right, and I just want to break that down. So, a couple of years ago, we presented to the board, we did analysis of the revenues that come in for this program and how we spend the money, and we identified that over five years, we get local sticker, resident and visitor sticker revenue generates about $1 million over five years for the public sector. So, that's for us to maintain the program and to pay for things that all the grants don't pay for and any additional needs. About half a million over that five-year period is generated for the private sector. So, sticker sales are out there at local bait and tackle shops, hardware stores, even some individuals sell stickers because they live in a community with a lot of boaters and they know a lot of visitors, or they're CTAs, Certified Tortoise ambassadors, and they sell stickers. And they get a percentage of every sticker sale, and for like a small bait and tackle shop, they can get $8,000, $10,000 a year of that revenue from sticker sales. If they're a busy tackle shop, that can go to a part-time staffer, keeping the lights on, health insurance, those kinds of things. So, if we lose our sticker program, if we are no longer prevention program, we can't sell stickers, that's a direct hit not only to the public sector, for our department for this program, but also for the private sector that relies on some of those sticker sales. Of that total amount of sticker revenue, 800,000 of that is generated by visitors. So, if the lake gets temporarily shut down or there's restrictions, some of those visitors might not come here to enjoy the lake, and that would, again, that's a loss of that revenue from those sources of funds. We get about $1.25 million from our state grants over that five-year period, and so, that's money that comes from outside of the county that comes here into the county. And our staff of ramp monitors, I talked about them earlier, there's about 15, and so, they all live here, they spend all that money here that they get for working as ramp monitors from those state grants, and all of that would be lost as soon as there's a detection in our lake. And of course, ecosystem loss, we have no idea what those trickle-down or domino impact losses would be. Next slide, please. So, away from Debbie Downer. Okay, next steps. What do we need to do? So, we provided you guys with a plan today and the public. We really want to ask for any review, comments, questions, if we're forgetting anything major on this plan and things we need to consider, and we want to incorporate that into the plan. And we really like to have a finalization date later this month. However, that's just, we're lots of wiggle room. We want to make sure that we create something that's useful, that we can have, that we can use as a guideline, and so, any information or review, comments we have received for that, we'll take them. We are going to, within six months to a year, consolidate the website that was made for the plan development into our www.nomussels.com website, just to make sure it's easy for the public to access that information without having all these different websites out there. And then, my question today for the board is, is this plan need to be adopted by the board? It's not a grant requirement on our end. It hasn't really been indicated by the state Fish and Wildlife that we need to have an official local adoption. So, it's up to you guys if we feel like that's something we need to do, but I didn't know where to go for that, and so, I'm leaving it open. We can have this plan. It is probably going to be iterative in some aspects. We're kind of going to be adding it. It'll evolve, and sometime, we can always bring that back to the board for an updated adoption, but that was my question for you guys today for that. And last slide, thank you so much for this presentation. Thank you so much to our consultants. I really appreciate working with you guys. It was great. Your expertise is phenomenal and being able to have help in facilitating and making this reality. I sleep a little bit better at night knowing we have something on the books here that'll help us if we get an inspection, so I really appreciate it. And again, thank you to all the ramp monitors that make this program work.
Thank you so much for your contribution also. And Angela, I know this is a passion project for you, so we always appreciate hearing these presentations. I'm going to open it up to see if there's any questions or comments from the board. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much, everyone. I had the opposite effect. I stayed awake at night. I looked at that pretty report for a week before I took it home, and as important as it is, I don't recommend it for bedtime reading. Because I was scared. I was scared by what I read, and nothing I heard here today actually gives me much comfort. If anything, it's worse to hear that we could actually pull the plug on our prevention funding on the mere report of a possible infestation is like pretty draconian. So, to your question, you know, and we'll hear what the rest of the board says, but adoption of a plan, even though there's no deliverable that could come out of that adoption, seems very prudent and reasonable to me. Definitely migrating the website, although No Mussels, I did have a question. I did like the microsite because it had the Clear Lake SEO term in there. So, as we look to merge those, question is if our analytics are clear on the No Mussels site, that people can find it easily from a Clear Lake search as opposed to something that is clearly a national problem. The funding asks, I thought, were very on point, and you know, we're not here with any proposals today, but I definitely would perk my ears up to anything that was brought back later on that. And the only real takeaway I got is, it's an if/when question, but it really sounds like the way it's been phrased here in this report and the necessity of this county to develop reserves to respond, it's more of a when question than an if question. And it's like, the biggest threat seems to be the same thing that is one of the big success stories, you know, the size and the quality of our bass fishery and the sheer number of boats that are coming in to take advantage of that also pose, very ironically, the greatest risk to the continuation of that fishery and to the protection of the Clear Lake environment as a whole. So, I just want to thank you for the overarching vision. If there's a way we can get actual print copies out, distributed without necessarily, you know, slapping people up for print costs or something like that, I mean, I think we need to get this word out, and the website's important and all that, but that report slapped me upside the head, and when you come back for those asks later down the road, I'm going to be citing that chapter and verse. So, thank you for bringing that.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I'm not sure if the website works, if that's not correct. I just can't seem to find it. I was able to find the prevention site, but not that one specifically. There's a couple of things in there. We talked about Yolo County flood control, and I'm sure as I say that exact phrase, that Director Deleon is probably rolling his eyes. I know he has been in front of the Yolo County Flood Controlled Board, asking for assistance, letting them know this will affect your farmers, this will affect your equipment, this will affect your dam. They just kind of blew him off at that point in time. So, I would definitely be open for a new conversation, but unfortunately, the history of those conversations have resulted in nothing, and I think that they're ready to take action when action is needed, but not looking to put any resources in the prevention part of it, which to me is the most important part. And so, I want to really focus on the prevention part because I think having a plan if they're here is one thing, but we're also kind of screwed at that point. There's going to be a lot of issues that slowly accumulate exponentially that will impact us economically and biologically in our lake and our ecology around the lake. So, I would love to see a, there was a lot of conversation about things we can do to enhance our docks, our piers, our boat ramps and things like that. I would love to see a strategic plan of sorts on how to implement those things, what the potential costs are, so that we can see maybe year by year, what are we doing to enhance those things? Because a part of it is under our control, but a part of it is also a little bit of luck because there's got to be 1,000, if not more, private ramps from all the onshore housing that is available to private people. And so, I think a little bit of that is based on personal activity. Are you going to actually take care and do the right thing with your boat versus going to a public ramp where, at this point, we have individuals that will check your boat and make sure you have the stickers and all that? If we catch somebody in the lake without a sticker, that's too late, things of the kind. So, I think prevention is still something that we can control and that we should control and that we look at enhancing in any way possible. In the past, when they did the Save the Lake tax, that never went through. I know they were talking about gates that you had to pay, and obviously, there would be some things that you need to check off before you get those gates to open up for you. I don't know if that's still an option, but I think we need to look at all those options. Couple of things that I did not see within the context of, it was under legal authority and other stuff, but still, I saw PG&E was in there, which is a little awkward, PG&E and quagga mussels, but I didn't see any mention other than at the bottom where there's ramps or there's connections to the lake. I didn't see at what point is the conversation or their collaboration with cities and tribes. We're all going to be impacted by this, not just the county, not just the state, but how do we make sure that everybody who has stake in dealing with this plan in a very proactive way, if we end up with quagga mussels? What are we all doing together rather than just what's the county doing with the state? We got to make sure it's all hands on deck, and I don't see that in here unless I missed it. I'm sure the conversations may be happening, but if it's not in the plan, then when, at what point, do we involve all of those jurisdictions to have the conversation? So, that was what I saw was missing, but I'd love to see a strategic plan in elevating our prevention because I get it. I'm certain that there's a point where the state will say, you can't have prevention dollars, but we have restoration dollars or we have ways to manage dollars. So, it's maybe just a different bucket that we get access to, but at the same time, let's see what we can do to put as many resources behind prevention right now.
And have you made this presentation to the Fish and Wildlife Committee, or I know you're on that committee, and so, you're, I'm sure you're having these conversations.
I presented it at the August meeting, the last meeting. We didn't have a quorum, so we didn't meet, but I presented it, I showed them the website.
Okay.
I showed them where the plan is, and yeah, they have received that. And Greg Uste was involved. He's the chair of the Fish and Wildlife Committee, and he was involved in the original quagga mussel advisory committee that kind of formulated the ideas for the sticker prevention program. And then, can I respond to any of Bruno or?
Yeah, gosh.
Okay, thank you. So, Yolo County is definitely at the table. They participated in the development of this. The state is actually pushing them to improve their prevention, their monitoring. Previously, we had done monitoring in Indian Valley, and the state really is pushing them to be more involved in Indian Valley and Cache Creek Dam monitoring and to develop more response actions. So, we're really thankful the state is getting them more involved and pushing them to do that. And there's about 700 private ramps out there or, you know, access points, so that could be a dirt road next to someone's ranch or outbuildings. be a dirt road next to someone's ranch or outbuildings. And so, it's really hard to enhance prevention efforts through mechanical barriers. So, my worry is putting in gates or some restrictions that prevent access. People are just going to go find another way to get in, and it's really hard for us to manage all of those that are on private properties. What we can do and what we're doing now with the shoreline ordinance, so Chapter 23, we are updating that ordinance, and we are including requirements for all property owners that have boat access or dock structures to comply with the Chapter 15, the Quagga Mussels Inspection Program. And the way they do that is if a boat is launched without a sticker, not only is the boat owner, but also the property owner of that access point can get a citation. That's the way we can start with that shoreline ordinance updates. It hasn't gone through legal yet. We haven't had public comment. We're still finishing the internal review of that, but we're looking at ways that we can address some of those private property access issues and complying with Quagga Mussels prevention through other ordinances. PG&E, because they have Lake Pillsbury, they do monitoring up there for Quagga Mussels because the state requires it, so we actually get data from them, but we do our own monitoring up there also. And as far as connections to the lake between the cities and tribes, so all the cities and the tribes were invited to participate with the development of this plan at every aspect. I can, and planning to go to the cities to present the same plan and get their feedback and get their comments to address for this. One of the recommendations that the consultants talked about was doing more collaborative, strategic, like stakeholder meetings and community meetings, and that's, I think, what you were kind of touching on, is maybe every year, twice a year, have a Quagga Mussels Response or Planning Meeting where we invite anybody that could be impacted by an introduction or impacted by prevention efforts. Meet together, do some updates, talk about potential funding, who wants to be partners, and you know, looking at what are new water bodies that are infested, or what has somebody done in their water body, or what has somebody done to increase monitoring? So, I think that's an avenue where we can make those connections and involve the partners that you spoke to. Prevention Plan, so we currently have a prevention plan that was approved by the state in order for us to get state funding, and that was approved, I updated it, and it was approved in 2019. It's due for an update in next year, so '24, '25. So, in that prevention plan, we've been told by the state it needs to be more robust. You need to do more monitoring. You have to have more things in there about what you guys are doing for prevention, or where are the barriers for enhancing prevention program? So, some of the things that you talked about, Supervisor Sabatier, will be included in that prevention plan, and that's something I can come back to the board and talk on, and then also have public input that can improve that plan update. I think that was all my responses, and thank you for your comments.
And can you talk more about what it would look like locally to have the stickers for the non-motorized boats?
Yeah, so, we were trying to figure that out, but there'd probably be a specific sticker just for, say, like kayaks, or there's like belly boats, there's non-motorized boats, especially over the last few years. When this program started, you know, people had kayaks and they kind of stayed there, but they didn't really travel as much with kayaks and canoes, and there wasn't as many tournaments. Now, we get, you know, 10 tournaments that are all kayaks, or belly boat tournaments. We had a belly boat tournament in Highland Springs. Belly boats are kind of inflatable things that people sit in, they go fishing, and they collapse, and they can store a lot of water, you know, during travel, but they don't have a motor, so they're not trailered, so they're not required to get a sticker in the current ordinance. So, it's definitely something that we need to work out. Somebody that lives on Clear Lake that has a kayak that sits under their dock, you know, and they use during the summer with their kids, maybe there's a lifetime sticker, and every year they can verify it, or every five years they can verify that that kayak stays here and doesn't leave. These are all ideas we have to work through, but we want to make sure that, you know, we're not charging ordinance fees for local residents, but still considering pathways for visitors, and we just haven't been able to work that out yet.
Right, but we do have residents that move around from our bodies of water that are within the county. And I've taken my kayaks to Wyoming and Idaho and Montana and had to stop every single time and get an inspection and a new sticker, but I'm happy to do it. So, I think that's definitely something that we should continue to talk about, too.
Thank you. I will say that I've reached out to the state for guidance on that, and because our grants and the State Division of Boating and Waterways is focused on boats and motors, they don't have a lot of information and guidance for that.
I think the other states do, though.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Supervisor Crandall?
You mentioned kayaks and the stickers. Were you referring to boats as well that are already on the lake that don't have, or that have an outdated sticker? Did you mention that? Did I miss that, or was that just kayaks that you mentioned?
Well, we talk about boats. If they have a motor, they have to get a sticker. So, if they move with a trailer or a motor, then our current ordinance says they have to get a sticker. So, if they're a resident boat, they get a sticker, a resident sticker, but if they're a visitor boat with a motor, it has to be trailered.
What I mean is, let's say that in, like the Keys, for example, there's a boat that's been sitting in the water with a 2019 sticker. What happens from that point?
Yeah, so they're outdated, they could get a citation. They need to get a new sticker.
All right.
Yeah.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So, you mentioned you've had conversations with the cities and the tribes, but I still don't see how they are implemented in the plan.
They were invited.
And I want to make sure that they're embedded in the plan, so that when all of us here are gone and somebody pulls out a plan, they know exactly who they're supposed to bring to the table, rather than thinking that they know who they should be inviting, and then people are missing from the table. So, I would love to see that be more implemented, and once we find something, here are the people that need to come to the table, or who are invited to come to the table, to discuss how we're going to mitigate the potential outbreak of the mussels. And I just don't see that, and I want to make sure that that gets added in.
Noted it. Thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I want to echo that, too, for a couple of reasons. One, I heard you're in the middle of re-scoping the shoreline ordinance. Both cities have shoreline ordinances, and when I was still on city council, my understanding of where the county jurisdiction started and where the city's jurisdiction picked up was limited at best, and this sounds like one of those things, if the county is going to be the lead agency for the response, the cities and the county both have to come to some common understanding, like, oh, where the water's edge is where the county picks up, or is it this near shore, you know, whatever these zoning classifications are. It's kind of confusing, so if we're in the middle of redoing our shoreline ordinance anyway, it's very much timely and important that we try to encourage the city to take a look at their respective shoreline ordinances to make sure we're in full alignment to the extent possible. Quick question on the docks, though. So, it sounds like hard structures are a bigger target for the QZ mussels than, say, tulie beds and what have you. So, in addition to whatever inspection might be for boats attached to, you know, the 700 docks or something like that, are we currently inspecting the docks themselves for infestation? Is there a potential need to up our game on abatement of substandard structures, if only to remove that amount of hardscape from being potential infestation sources?
So, Quagga zebra mussels, they like hard substrates. They can colonize on any substrate. We have monitoring, artificial monitoring, about 16 to 20 locations around the lake, and then we have locations that we monitor on docks, hardscapes. Whenever, like Lakeport, for example, takes out their docks at the end of season, we go down there and we check the whole underside of those floating docks, because that's prime area for Quagga zebra mussel settlement, and it's easy then for us to run our hands over it, look and see, is it dirt, is it some other sort of accumulation, or is it a Quagga mussel? We check all of our buoy lines. We go out and move buoys as AIDS Navigation Program, and then because Quagga and zebra mussels are found on plants, and that's a great point about tulies, I do sampling for aquatic plants as part of the Aquatic Plant Management Program, and I'm always looking on those plants' materials to see if there's any settlers there. In addition, our partners at California Department of Food and Ag, you see them out there in the airboats. Every day, they're throwing grapples and they're sampling, and they know what Quagga zebra mussels look like. So, we have a great partner already embedded on the lake doing monitoring every day out there, you know, numerous teams that are monitoring for that. The state has told us that we need to improve our monitoring program, and so, part of our prevention update is to do that. So, we monitor for the juveniles, we do some toes in the water column, we do substrates, we do walk-on shorelines, look at rocks. We do all that, but the state has indicated they want to see more efforts, and so, we're working with them to figure out what exactly that looks like, what the coverage looks like and the frequency. I hope that answered your questions, Supervisor Green. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Crandall?
I just wanted to add and elaborate why I asked that question earlier, because I assumed and thought maybe that some folks that just keep their boat on the lake and never take it out in their residence probably thought maybe they had a lifetime sticker or something, so I just wanted to elaborate why I asked that, that's all.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for the public. Do we have anyone in the chambers or in the Zoom room?
Good morning, Board. Scott Harder, Lake County Special Districts Administrator. I just wanted to be brief and voice my support for this program, this plan. As Supervisor Sabatier noted, we really want to keep focusing on prevention. We manage two of 17 surface water treatment plants on the lake, and as was noted, there are hundreds of private water intakes as well. And the impact of the infrastructure that would happen due to an infestation is just, it's unfathomably bad. There aren't words big enough to describe how bad it would be. The infrastructure improvements needed just for our plants, you know, you're seeing in other areas, a couple hundred thousand dollars for initial capital infrastructure improvements to make changes to your water intakes, which would change maybe the screening or put disinfection points in there, UV radiation. You know, some of those methods don't work with the higher flow rates that some of the larger surface water treatment plants have, so they have to look at other, more expensive ways to prevent further damage, drawing those villagers, getting those mussels into the plant, into the pipes, into the distribution system, keeping them out on the raw water structure itself. And then, there's increased costs for monitoring. You know, we'd be monitoring on a very regular basis. There's O&amp;M costs, which could go way up. We had divers out at our North Lakeport intake last summer. Actually, I think some of the footage was in the video. Those divers cost $5,000 a day, just to come and show up on the lake. They need to be here for a few days, at least, to do cleaning and maintenance. Our intake currently pipe is, it's about 900 to 1,000 feet long. Cleaning the whole inside of that pipe, complicated, expensive, so can't say enough how much we support this effort, how much we support any prevention effort, so just wanted to put in my two cents.
Thank you, Director Harder. Do we have anyone else from the public, or anyone in the Zoom room? Okay, then I'll close public input and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier?
I just wanted to ask, because I saw that you wrote down what I stated, but I don't know that there was full consensus from the board. I didn't hear it, so I just wanted to make sure before I changed something that the board wasn't in approval of.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with collaborating with everyone that's got access to the lake, those opportunities. Thank you. Yeah, so I'm in agreement with that recommendation you made. Also, just have a moment. Having a plan, you know, long-term is very important. We've talked about the Quagga mussel sticker prices before, those types of things. I think prevention is the number one thing we need to continue on, but I also think that with the recommendation of having some funds set aside, you know, I think there's an opportunity. We need to look at something like that at mid-year budget, just to get something set aside, because, you know, as Supervisor Green said, it's not if, it's when. Potentially across, you know, the states, it's been happening. We need to be prepared for it and have some funds in there to be able to respond. So, I know we have some cannabis funds in the risk reduction area that we, you know, could consider. I know I'm throwing that out there right now, but you know, I just think that, you know, it's so important. You know, the really thing, obviously, the bass tournaments bring the economy stuff to us, very important, but the thing that I'm really concerned about is 66% of our water users being affected by this and long-term forever. So, I think that's the most important thing to focus on. Always want to have an economy, but you can't survive without water getting to your residents. So, I think that really concerns me, that we need to be proactive. And then, I guess the other question is, you talked about dip tanks. I had never heard about the dip tanks. Are there grant opportunities out there to get a dip tank, or I never heard of it before, so I'm just bringing it up.
Yeah, anything that's a capital infrastructure item like that, there are sources of funds. They do require a lot of partnerships, and of course, some local match. I've been successful with getting grants to sustain the prevention program and then some federal funds to work on this plan and other things. I have confidence, and I'm going to be getting grant funds as much as possible and reaching out and working with the partnerships, especially because we know that there's not really that rainy day fund from the state side, at least now. But, yeah, that is definitely something that we're going to maximize and go after, particularly because Clear Lake is such a draw as a western water body, and so, it's not just important for us and our economy, but for the whole western region. So, it's going to require a lot of finessing and partnerships with western water bodies and western agencies to protect the whole region. So, it's a little more of a heavy lift, but it's something that's doable, so we can get grant funds to, you know, maybe $2 million to put in two of these really cool dip tanks, which are also water conservation types of systems, and so, that would be ideal. They're really cool. You should look up videos on your break of YouTube of the dip tanks, because, yeah, that's.
Awesome. Supervisor Green?
Last quick question. So, you're probably at the tail end of this consulting contract. Is there enough in the gas tank that we could encourage or beg if the city managers would agree? I think both city councils should hear this stuff, if only to start getting their heads around what a potential city response might be. I know Lakeport, having participated in this study, definitely would be interested. So, is the scope of the contract just end with today's presentation as far as the consultant? If so, do you need a bump to encourage additional outreach? This is kind of watershed. This is like landmark stuff, and I think we all need that little sleepless night, if only to spur the next action. So, do you have the opportunity or the funding or the bandwidth to do a presentation like this to the cities?
So, this grant is, I believe, going until June. We were supposed to get a, like an intern to help us do some outreach work and couldn't recruit somebody for two years, so we got the grant extended, so we have a little extra funds for that. It's up to the consultants, Lisa and Leah. You guys are awesome. I'd love to have you present at the cities, but I think we can prioritize that, even if we didn't have funding through the grant. Yeah.
We would make sure it would happen no matter what.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Sabatier?
I just had a random thought. Number one, seaplanes. If you're looking at kayaks and other things like that, they also have the ability to fly from one place to another. I would suspect it would dry up, but I don't know enough. But the second is, do you work with CAL FIRE to figure out how they're making sure that their nets, as they're catching water from one lake and then moving on to another lake in order to try to put out fires? Is there a process to ensure that there's no sharing of these potential microbial mussels?
Yeah, so they have a whole protocol for fire mitigation equipment and tools that are used, where they go through a process of decontamination. There is audits or reviews of that, but you know, sometimes during the seasons, the wildfire season, there's fires all over, and they're overlapping, they're going from there to there. Is a plane a high-risk vector? If there's water there, they're up high, they're going really fast. I defer to the expertise of you guys. I don't know how much scientific studies we have. I will say that there is a protocol that CAL FIRE, Forest Service, they all follow, particularly when they are taking water from a water body with like a water tanker truck that may have come from a different county. They have to have a third basin. So, water goes into the basin, and then water comes out, so there's never equipment crossing that is directly going straight into a water body to limit the potential spread. But again, during times of fast wildfire mitigation, you know, we hope the process is completely, is followed, but I don't know what studies have been out there that actually have audited that exact.
So, Leah and I are just kicking off a national project with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to assess the risk of seaplanes and aquatic invasive species. We've just started that, but they are a risk. They have contributed to the spread of one particular species, Alodia, in Alaska. Most of the floats that are on those planes usually hold up to a quart of water even after they've been pumped out by a pilot, and so, they are not bone-dry when they are flying, and even at elevation and at certain speeds, they could travel long distances and still have a quart of water in them when they land on a water body. So, we'll be assessing the risk on that. It's about a year and a half project, but seaplanes are an interesting one.
Because I watch them land and take off, wondering where they came from and where they're going, and just wanted to ask the question, so I'm glad that you're doing the study.
Birds have also been shown to be vectors of invasive species in times, too.
Oh, come on. Oh, come on.
Sorry.
They're going to need a permit.
Well, thank you so much for your presentation today.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.